Another thirty seconds or so and we will begin. Well, good evening and welcome to tonight's forum hosted by the League of Women Voters of Corvallis and the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP. My name is Annette Mills. I'm the first Vice President of the League, and it is my pleasure to serve as your moderator for this evening's forum. During the next hour and a half together, we will be hearing from the two candidates for Benton County Commissioner, as well as providing an overview of Oregon's four ballot measures. To begin, let's take a moment to get oriented to tonight's event. First, if you have a question for the candidates, please enter your question into the Q and A box, which is typically found at the bottom of your screen. And we would note that the chat is disabled for audience measured members. So if you have a question, please put it in the Q and A. Second, this event is a Zoom webinar, and that means you will not have to worry about your own camera or microphone. You can just sit back and relax. Also, this event is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the League of Women Voters YouTube channel. Tonight's agenda will include opening remarks from each candidate, followed by four prepared questions. After that, we'll have audience questions for the candidates and wrap up with closing remarks from each candidate. After the county commissioner part of our program, two members of our league board will join me to provide a review of Oregon's four state ballot measures. And I'd like to make a final plug before we begin. Ranked choice voting has been adopted by Benton County and the city of Corvallis, and it will be used in this year's election in the city of Corvallis candidate races. Jessica McDonald has put into the chat box a link and a document with additional information on ranked choice voting and where you can learn more. So now, let's turn to our county commissioner forum. Candidates, please turn on your video. The two candidates for Benton County Commissioner, Position One, are the Democratic candidate Pat Malone and the Republican candidate William Bill Kuhn. We'll start with opening remarks. Each of you will have three minutes to introduce yourself and to discuss what you see as the most important issues facing Benton County. Bill, we're gonna start with you, and you can go now. Three minutes.
Very much, Annette. My name is Bill Kuhn. I'm running for the position of Benton County Commissioner. I'm seventy-six years old. I've been married for fifty-three years to the same woman. I'm a retired general contractor. I'm a U.S. Navy Vietnam veteran, and I believe that the county should be run like a business. I have run in my lifetime five successful businesses, and I run those businesses watching the pennies so that the dollars would take care of themselves. I believe we need to focus on the details of the budget. We have a budget that was $311 million. Now that budget is $363 million. I am very curious, although I've looked through the budget, I'm very curious where we found another $50 million for the budget, especially in these bad economic times. I hope that somehow I will be able to ferret out ways that we can save money for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So now, Pat, it is your turn to take up to three minutes to introduce yourself and to discuss what you see as the most important issues facing Benton County, and you can go ahead and start.
Okay, I'm Pat Malone, and it's been my honor to serve as your Benton County Commissioner for these last thirty-four challenging years. I would like to talk about my experience that qualifies me for this job. I've learned a lot in four years on the job. I'm much more effective now than I at problem solving than I was when I started. I would like to talk about the progress on some of the challenges facing Benton County. Homelessness is a serious problem that deserves our attention, and that's why we formed the Hope Advisory Board, which is a partnership between Corvallis and Benton County. They took several years to produce twelve recommendations that we are starting to implement. I'll continue to keep Benton County safe by supporting the Justice Center, Justice System Project, and we're in the process of finalizing the facility's footprint, which will include a new, much-needed correctional facility. We're also working on a crisis center that will be downtown, and that's also in the final design phase and is part of the solution to the houseless situation. I want to talk a little bit about our health department. I'm proud to be part of a team which has kept Benton County safe and healthy during the COVID challenge. And I want to thank the Benton County community for being careful and following the best medical advice during this pandemic. From my tree farm experience, I have developed my long-term planning skills, and this includes budgeting. In the Christmas tree business, when your paycheck comes once a year, you learn to be very careful with money, and I take spending other people's money very seriously. No one solves our large challenges alone. It takes partnerships. We need the help of local, state, and federal elected officials, and I have spent more than two decades building relationships with these officials, which will continue to benefit Benton County. I'm endorsed by elected officials, including Congressman DeFazio, State Senator Sarah Ilser Bluen, and Representative and Speaker Dan Rayfield. And these aren't just names on my campaign literature. They are long-term relationships which will continue to benefit Benton County. With the experience I've gained in the last four years, I will be even more effective if I'm elected to a second term. So I ask for your continued support and your vote come November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Now we'll move into hearing responses to four questions that have been posed by the League. And you will have, each have two minutes to respond to each of those four questions. And Pat, we are going to start with you for this first round. Please explain your position on the criminal justice levy proposal and the county services for law violator supervision and treatment of addictions and mental health conditions. You have two minutes to respond.
I enthusiastically support the levy for the new Justice Center. It's long overdue, and we've under-invested, under-invested in treatment programs and facilities for decades. Benton County is continuing to develop more appropriate options than just using the jail or the emergency room for people having substance and mental health issues. The Justice Center goal is to get people the help they need, and we desperately need a new correctional facility, not only for our adults in custody, but it would also benefit our staff. Ninety-five percent of the people released from our jail come back into our community. So we need space to do the education, counseling, and treatment that our adults in custody desperately need and can't get now because of a cramped facility. I support the pilot project of having a Benton County mental health provider going out with Corvallis Police Department-trained personnel. This is the core program, Crisis Outreach Respond and Engage Pilot Program. It shows great promise, and it started in July 2021, and it's our answer to the cahoots-type program in Eugene. And I think later I can expand on talking about the Crisis Center that we are designing for downtown Corvallis. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Pat and Bill, if you could both just go ahead and leave your video on throughout the questions. So Bill, it's your turn, same topic. Please explain your position on the criminal justice levy proposal and the county services for law violator supervision and treatment of addictions and mental health conditions, and you have two minutes to respond. Go ahead.
Well, having met with the sheriff, the Corvallis Police Chief, and others, I am well aware that the current justice system is untenable. The jail is so small that whenever the court sends a new inmate to the front door, others must be released through the back door. Regardless of how they do this, this is a bad situation. Why is the jail so small? The jail was designed as a small temporary facility that would be supported by a large regional jail built by the state. That failed to happen. So here we are with a small jail, and what do we do? Yes, we need a larger jail. We knew, the need for new facilities is clear. But what's not clear is can the county afford a new bond issue at this time of inflation and recession and COVID recovery? There are no guarantees that the voters will approve this large bond of $95 million to build this jail. It has failed three times before. And I'm curious whether the county administration has a Plan B. They've said that they do, but I don't think we can afford $95,000. I think perhaps we should split up those portions that are going to, excuse me, be included in the justice system building. So why not attack the one that's most important at this point for housing people in the jail? I think that's the issue. I just don't think that the citizens of Benton County are willing to extend $95 million on a bond issue when everyone I speak with is already concerned about their taxes and the expenses of living in Corvallis and Benton County. Others say that there's other funding that can be obtained to build these jails. Well, we don't have that in hand, and my understanding is that the county has already committed to that site when there are two other sites that are available, one over where the old mill was and the second one near the airport.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Sure thing. Thank you.
All right, sure. Now we're gonna move on to our second question. From a justice and equity lens, how does accountability look to you as a county commissioner? So Bill, for this second question, let's have you go first, and again, you have two minutes to respond.
Well, justice is difficult even in the best of times. I sympathize with the courts of police and social workers that are working hard to render justice during these trying times of COVID and the limitations and adequate jail and courthouse shortcomings. As commissioner, I will work to support these workers and recognize their success. In discussions I've had with individuals working in these areas, the subject of equity has not been raised as an issue. Perhaps I believe we should continue focusing on equity rather than, excuse me, on equality rather than equity. I think that the justice system is in need of some enhancing in some fashion to make sure that the victims of crimes have as much right as the criminals, which leads us to one of the ballot measures that we're going to discuss. I think we need to revamp our justice system, not totally revamp, but revamp some of the ways that we do our business with criminals. Criminals are just that, they're criminals, and once convicted, then we have to house them. And we need not to coddle them. We need to make sure that they work in the prison, and we provide a lot of money to house those prisoners. So I'm serious about making sure that people who are victims benefit more from the justice system than the criminals. Excuse me.
All right, thank you, Bill. Pat, same question. From a justice and equity lens, how does accountability look to you as a county commissioner? And you have two minutes. Go ahead.
One way accountability would be measured is by the progress Benton County makes in addressing the needs of our houseless population. A large commitment by the county is to continue to expand our efforts serving the health needs of our most vulnerable populations. This includes keeping our five health clinics operating and reaching all of Benton County, the Benton County community. And we are increasing our mental health outreach. We are in the design phase of the Crisis Center, and that will provide an option for people in crisis besides jail or the emergency room. We hope to have this up and running by the end of next year. And we will continue to find partners by leveraging funding opportunities. Thanks to Speaker Rayfield, we got 5.5 million of funding for the Crisis Center. That's not the whole amount needed, but there are other sources. And I'm actively pursuing multiple funding opportunities so that we can continue to develop more treatment options. Accountability can be measured by how soon and how well Benton County achieves these initiatives.
All right, thank you, Pat. So moving right along to our third question. How would you work across jurisdictions to improve services such as affordable housing, transportation, policing, social services, and the economy? And Pat, for this question, it's your turn to go first, so go ahead.
As I mentioned earlier, we need partners to make progress on any of our serious challenges. No single entity has all the answers or the resources to make significant progress on these challenges. An example of jurisdictions working together to solve problems is the core program that I mentioned earlier, Crisis Outreach Respond and Engage, which includes a Corvallis Police Department officer combining with a Benton County mental health person to respond to calls that don't require typical law enforcement response. Another example was Operation Turnkey. Local governments and nonprofits knew what was needed, but we needed the state's help with funding to buy an old motel, and we now have a twenty-eight-unit facility, the Third Street Commons. I've toured this facility, and it's working well with an amazing staff. Through my efforts with the Association of Oregon Counties, I have developed relationships with many commissioners across the state. We often have similar challenges, and with this group, I have the opportunity to compare how different counties solve our common problems. Another example of jurisdictional cooperation is the Council of Governments that includes the Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties. It has a wealth of services, serving seniors and people with disabilities, and a program that most people know about is Meals on Wheels, and that's housed in the Council of Governments area. And if I had more time, Community Services Consortium has a similar geographic footprint and does similar services.
All right, thank you, Pat. Bill, same question. How would you work across jurisdictions to improve services such as affordable housing, transportation, policing, social services, and the economy? And again, you have two minutes to respond. Go ahead.
Annette, I think that my focus would be the economy. Because if we can't focus on the economy and we don't have a strong economy, we won't have any money to pay for housing, policing, or social services. I think the economy being in the shape that it's in, we need to take a real hard look at our budget and how we spend money. As commissioner, one of the things I think I would do is ask Ron Wyden what he is doing to protect Benton County farmers from capricious trade practices by China. Our Benton County hazelnut farmers pay around $6,000 to ship a load of pre-tested products to China. But China requires the nuts to be retested again, and if it fails, the Oregon farmer is told it will cost them $36,000 to return the nuts to Oregon. As a result, China gets the nuts for free. How can our farmers and our other parts of our, excuse me, and the other parts of our economy manage to survive under these unfair practices? I think that we need to take a sharp look again at our economy. And when looking at the economy, I think our budget needs to be trimmed. I don't think, again, that we can afford to spend another $95 million. I think we need to segregate parts of that out so that we minimize the expense to the taxpayers. Yes, we need a new justice system. And social services, I'm not so sure that we can spend any more money than we do. I commend the Hope Project. I think they do a great job. But I think what we're doing is we're giving people a handout rather than a hand up. I think the county has been reactive rather than proactive, and I'm not sure that we could solve, totally solve, the homeless prospects that are involved here. I think some homeless people want to be that way. Certainly, a lot of them are affected by drugs and alcohol, and the others are affected by mental illness, but there is a portion of that where we can find jobs for them with the Aid to Needing Families program, which will create jobs.
Thank you, Bill. Time's up. Thanks. All right, our final prepared question is, do you see a role for the county to address the climate crisis? If yes, what would you do? If not, why not? And Bill, for this question, it's your turn to go first, and you have two minutes to respond, so.
I'm muted here, sorry.
That's okay.
I think we're serious about the climate crisis. We should pray to God for help, as there is truly little that mankind can do to alter the climate. In the meanwhile, if you want to punish someone for natural phenomenon, then focus on China. Why should the U.S. be forced to make all the concessions and expensive sacrifices? I would not insist on foolish boondoggles like electric buses when we are worried whether the power grid would support even the vehicles that are now in California. In the same week, the governor of California wanted everyone to buy an electric car, and the same week, brownouts. Don't charge your vehicles. Keep in mind that we like to be asked to take a bond issue and get a $95 million. I think we could focus more of that money on some other issues, perhaps social issues and maybe crisis issues or climate issues that we could address. So in closing on this argument, I think that there's not much that we can do at a local level as far as the climate. The climate is what it is, and we're not Mother Nature, and we can't change those things. The only things we can do is go along with programs that are with the federal government that try to address climate change, and in addition, we need to go internationally so that people like China, countries like China, will reduce their pollution. If they're gonna do that, I'm doubtful, but hopefully that will happen. But why should we, as Americans, carry all that weight?
All right, thank you, Bill. Pat, same question. Do you see a role for the county to address the climate crisis? If yes, what would you do? If not, why not? And again, you have two minutes to respond. Go ahead.
I absolutely agree that Benton County has a significant role in being a partner to help some of our climate crisis issues. And here's what Benton County is currently doing. We have two staff members whose job it is to guide Benton County's policies and practices regarding our impact on the environment. We spent over two years developing our 2040 goals to provide a guide for sustainable, climate-friendly policies in all our efforts. Now our task is to put these goals into practice. Benton County has five solar, building, solar panels on five of our buildings and have signed up with Pacific Power's Blue Sky Program so that an increasing amount of our electricity comes from renewable sources. Our recently remodeled Kalipulia Building on Research Way is likely to receive LEED Gold Certified rating. This required extra work and upfront costs, but the county will benefit from reduced operating costs for decades to come in addition to being good for our environment by using less of our precious resources. I will continue to help Benton County being a leader in climate-friendly practices. And as a tree farmer, I've been well aware of the changing climate and that I think of the 115-degree temperatures that we had in the Willamette Valley late June last year. That's not normal. I've been in western Oregon my whole life, and that's something is seriously changing with our climate, and we all have a responsibility to be part of the solution.
Thank you, Pat. All right, now it is time for our audience to have a chance to ask questions. So, audience members, please remember to type your questions into the Q and A at the bottom of your screen. And Jessica McDonald, our voter education chair with the League, will read the questions, and then each of our candidates will have one minute to respond to each question. So Jessica, what's the first question?
Thank you, Annette. And this is a compilation of questions that are being added into the chat as well as sent in in advance of tonight's forum. The first question is, how is Benton County safeguarding our votes?
Could you repeat that again?
How is Benton County safeguarding our votes?
Okay, all right. You get one minute. Pat, would you go first, please?
Yeah, great, great question. It's obviously in the news. James Morales is the head of our Records and Elections Department. He's a twenty-year veteran of handling our elections, and has done a, he and his staff have done a great job. I like to kid him after an election about, another boring election, James, where there's no controversy. It's, they just do a great job. We got a report from James on changes to the system. There will be nine cameras, one at each station as the ballot goes through the process, and that will be available for the November election. So we've got a great crew who have done the job for decades.
All right, thank you, Pat. Same question for you, Bill, about safeguarding our votes.
I have some real concerns with respect to safeguarding our vote. There's a lot of controversy nationally and locally about what votes count, who's voting, et cetera. We should have and do have people who should be able to monitor those ballot countings. Only now are we seeing people that have gotten into there to be able to see, rather than being blacked out and not being able to see the votes being counted. Another issue is who's voting? There are various programs that you can access that will tell you how many people are eligible to vote at a particular address. And we found addresses where there are people who don't live there anymore who are eligible to vote. And let's say you're in Missouri, and you know that you have an address in Benton County, and you call and say, "I've lost my ballot. Can you please send me a ballot? I'm out of town. Please send it to me." That person could seriously vote and affect the election. I think we need more focus, more attention on protecting our vote. Who votes?
Thank you, Bill.
If you don't do that, we're sunk.
All right, thank you, Bill. And Jessica, next question.
Do you support expanding Coffin Butte landfill? Why or why not? Do you support expanding Coffin Butte landfill? Why or why not?
And for this one, Bill, your turn to go first.
Thank you, Annette. I'm not sure where we go if we don't expand Coffin Butte. One of the problems that exists currently is that other counties, other locations, and municipalities are bringing trash to Coffin Butte. Are we charging them enough? Can we expand Coffin Butte? I have watched that go from a plateau to a mountain down at Coffin Butte. Where do we go if we don't expand Coffin Butte? I do know that we extract methane gas from Coffin Butte enough to supply several homes, and I think that was quick. Sorry.
No, no, that was thirty seconds. Remember, that's the thirty. No, no, that was thirty seconds. Remember that's the thirty seconds.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But I think if we expand it, that's probably the only logical choice because where else can we go, Annette?
All right. Thank you, Bill. Same question, Pat.
Yeah, I, I have taken through the primary and now not weighed in on a, a yes or no answer to that question. Partially because that may come before the Board of Commissioners at some point in, in the future. What we have done at the county is stood up a sixteen-member community-based work group, which we call the Talking Trash Work Group, that's about halfway through the process of uh, looking at, at some of these issues and the, the goal, a- and this is with a third-party moderator and, and the county has invested significant time and effort in this effort and the goal is to come out with recommendations from this workroom to the county commissioners towards the end of the year.
Okay, thank you, Pat. All right, Jessica, next question, please.
Yes. The state of Oregon and Oregon's Department of Transportation are prioritizing reduced use of fossil fuel-powered vehicles. And they're investing in alternative transportation options such as bike and pedestrian pathways and electric vehicles. As commissioner, how would you support or not support these efforts?
All right, for this one, Pat gets to go first. Pat?
Yep. I'm enthusiastically supporting these measures and, and I'm uh, on the county level, on the front lines. I, I sat on a number of uh, transportation committees, Lynn Benton Loop. And this afternoon just got off uh, Corvallis Area MPO Conference where our meeting where we talked about the, some of the challenges of Flometh Boulevard with our ODOT partners. Since I've been commissioner, I've been monitoring, pushing the Corvallis to Albany bike path that's long overdue. Uh, one of my goals is to be able to get around our area without a car so that I support transit options and anything we can do and glad the state is starting to support these kind of efforts.
Thank you, thank you, Pat. Right, same question, Bill.
I would be opposed to electric vehicles and such. I think that it takes more energy and more of an impact on the environment by manufacturing solar panels. And we're in the Northwest. What do we do on cloudy days? And we saw what happened in Texas with solar panels and wind machines. And wind machines here and, and I, I was just up in Eastern Oregon and I saw those wind machines. I think they're purged on the scenery. I just don't like to see that. And those windmill blades are fiberglass. They can't dispose of them. They have to bury them. And some of the people in our state want to eliminate our hydroelectric power. And how are we going to replace that? It's certainly not going to be enough by using solar and wind energy. It's just not going to work. We're not ready for that.
All right. Thank you, Bill. All right, next question.
Yes. Should the commission do more towards a goal of eliminating houselessness? If yes, what steps would you advocate for? If no, why not?
All right, Bill, your turn to start with this one.
If I understand that correctly, she was asking about homelessness?
Yes.
Before we start my time.
Do you, do you want her to read the question again?
Yes, please.
Yeah, Jessica, can we hear that?
Yes, absolutely. Should the commission do more towards a goal of eliminating houselessness? If yes, what steps would you advocate for? If no, why not?
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
I think we're already doing as much as we can do with the Hope Project. However, I think throwing more money at it doesn't work. That's been exhibited. We still have homeless problems. We have mental health, we have drug addiction, we have all of those tents that show up in the county and particularly in Corvallis. I think what we need to do is focus on giving a, as I mentioned before, a hand up rather than a hand out. We've thrown a lot of money, had a lot of commissions. A lot of people look at this and there are still homeless people out there. I think what we need to do is take a serious look at the homeless situation and initiate programs like the Aid to Needy Families where we provide jobs, get them off the welfare roll, get them jobs and then maybe they can afford housing in Corvallis. But at this point, housing, affordable housing in Corvallis is unlikely. And I can go into that later if you wish.
Thank you, Bill. All right, Pat, your turn. Same question.
Yeah, I would disagree with my opponent that we've done all we can on, on this issue. The, the Hope uh, group has come out with, like I said, twelve recommendations. We are just at, at the very beginning of implementing some of those. And I think I also mentioned the Crisis Center downtown with, which we're, we're trying to move along as quickly as we can. Hopefully that will be uh, up and running by the end of next year to, to help get people a, a safe place to, to go when they're, when they're in some kind of crises. And we're, we've got a long ways to go, but I, I think we uh, have a pretty good roadmap how to go forward. A new correctional facility will also help because it will have room for treatment programs and education.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
All right, Jessica, next question from our audience.
Yes. Uh, what do you see the role being for the commission in terms of local and statewide discussions on water needs and drought? The role of the commission in local and statewide conversations on water needs and drought.
All right, Pat, your turn first. One minute.
Okay. Uh, the county does, does have a role. We do not directly operate any water systems, but we can be a, a third party. We helped some, some people just east of the landfill kind of negotiated an agreement that, that they could no longer have to be a standalone water system, but can get hooked up to the Albany larger system. So, and we've got OSU and there's a lot of information and expertise there. So we're, we're, we're involved and with these discussions and definitely are, are concerned with the change in the climate and different uh, weather patterns that th- this is something that I think the county can be a an active participant with other partners.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. So same question for you, Bill. What's the role of the county commission in local and statewide discussions of water needs and drought?
I'm not sure that we can legislate anything that controls the water usage. All we can do is ask that people conserve water. I'm acutely aware of situations of water shortage. I live in South Benton County and I have neighbors who have dry wells and yet who have to truck in water. I'm very aware of the water situation. And given the climate, as I mentioned before, only God controls that. We can't control the climate. All we can do is suggest to people who are using the municipal water systems that they try and conserve water, not water their lawns, et cetera. I know green lawns make us happy, but they don't do a whole lot for us for conserving water. I think I would rather drink it than put it on my lawn.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Do we have any further questions, Jessica?
We do. We have a kind of a specific question. Will you support funding a half-time land use planner position who helps our smaller cities in Benton County?
All right, and Bill, I believe it is your turn to start with that one. Do you support a half-time position for a land use planner to help the smaller communities in Benton County? Go ahead.
Frankly, I wouldn't support any more people on our budget. We're already strained. We're at fifty million dollars more than we were the last budget. I think that would be a strain on our budget. However, I think that the county and the cities need to initiate programs where they make it easier for contractors and builders to build affordable housing. I've talked to several people in Corvallis, builders actually, who don't want to build there because of restrictions. We need to ease zoning restrictions, speed up the process of permitting and make it easier for developers to build housing. You always have the situation of NIMBY, not in my neighborhood. Well, sometimes we have to do that to build affordable housing and the option would be perhaps uh, temp- not temporary housing, but remanufactured housing, which is less expensive than stick-built housing. But we certainly have to develop programs that encourage building homes and change that system.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Pat, how would you answer that question?
Yeah, if I understand the question correctly, we're already doing that. Pat Deppa, I think is full-time with the County Planning Department and does work for Adair, Flometh and perhaps Monroe. So they small, there was legislation several years ago that required smaller jurisdictions to have uh, planning capability and this was our uh, solution to it. And, and I think it's working, as far as I know, working fairly well. So I'm, and I think Pat is full-time. So, but spread through several jurisdictions and, and then does, I think, some work for Benton County. So I, maybe we've already solved that one.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, next.
There's one more, one more question here.
One more question, okay.
Uh, if Benton County is getting money from various federal acts that have passed over the last year, where would you focus those funds within the county?
All right, and Pat, you get to go first on this one. Where would you focus the federal funds coming to the county?
Well, I think. I've done enough, enough work with transportation dollars and, and other dollars. Generally, money doesn't come in and, and then at, leave it to the counties to decide how, how to use it. It's generally uh, specified for a specific type of projects. Anybody that's dealt with federal government knows that there's usually uh, strings attached. So if it's transportation money, I've talked about that a little bit already. What our challenges are around the uh, county like the rest center from the state. And so the county is actively looking for funding opportunities. In fact, we just
Thank you.
Brand administrator.
Pat, I'm sorry, the time is up.
Yep.
So, um, Bill, where would you want to see federal money go if it's coming to the county? Um, where would you direct that, those funds?
First, I would address, I would like to address the federal money, federal and state money. Of the three hundred and sixty-three million dollars of the budget, only seventy million of it is taxpayer money in Benton County. The rest of that money is a federal grant. So what happens if those grants go away? If the political environment changes, what happens to those, that grant money? If it goes away, the county is in serious financial trouble. So I think we need to assess whether there are really needs versus spending money that maybe we may not have. Once again, only seventy million of the three hundred and sixty-three million is actual tax money and the bulk of the money that the county gets is from various grants. Now, you say grants, yes, that's fine and it's free money for the county. Not true. Those grants are federal money or state money and they come out of my tax rolls. I'm opposed to that.
All right. Thank you very much, Bill. So Jessica, do I understand that that was the last question? Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Annette.
Okay, so now it is time for our candidates to provide their final comments. And you will each have one and a half minutes. And we will start with Bill for your closing comments, please.
As I mentioned before, I think the most important thing is a budget and how we spend money. Again, I think we need to take a serious look at where that money comes from and how we spend it. I just can't justify, and I'm sure Mr. Malone is aware of where all the money goes, but I've looked at the budget, which is two hundred and ninety-some pages long. And most of it is not very detailed. And I'm sure if given enough time, I could understand that and I'm sure Mr. Malone knows that. But once again, I just can't justify in my mind why in these bad economic times the commission and the county decides to spend another fifty million dollars and put a bond issue out there. We should look very closely at separating that justice system bond issue into a smaller number that can address just the jail situation.
Thank you, Bill. And Pat, now for your final comments and you get a minute and a half starting now.
Thanks. Uh, the job of commissioner is about listening, researching options and charting the best course for Benton County. I have the skills, energy and expertise to continue to do this job. I have longtime relationships with local, state and federal officials who can help Benton County solve some of our important challenges. I'm optimistic about Benton County's future. I've been doing the job and I'm ready to go for another term. If it sounds like there's a lot going on in Benton County government, you're right. I appreciate the interest tonight and some questions probably didn't get asked or answered to the level of detail that they deserve. And I would enjoy continuing these conversations. For questions or concerns for me as a candidate for reelection, my website is votepatmalone.org. If you have more questions for me as commissioner and want to continue the conversation, please contact me through the Benton County website. My promise to you is that I will continue my efforts in representing all of Benton County. I like this job and I ask for your continued support and your vote on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Well, thank you both very much, Candidates Malone and Coon. We appreciate your taking time from your busy schedules to participate in tonight's forum.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you tomorrow, Bill.
You betcha.
And now, sure, and now we turn to a review of the four state measures that you will see on your ballots. I'd like to welcome Heath Kirsten and Connie Bozarth, who are fellow league board members and they're going to provide a summary of each of the ballot measures. Note that Jessica has put information into the chat uh, on these measures and Heath will begin with a review of state ballot measure one eleven. Welcome, Heath.
Hi, thanks, Annette. There are four ballot measures on the November ballot. Connie and I will give a brief overview of them one by one. More information can be found in the voter guide prepared by League of Women Voters of Oregon. It can be found under the Election Resources tab of their website and we'll paste a link to the guide in the chat. Okay, first is ballot measure one eleven. It's a constitutional amendment referred to the voters. It was previously passed by the Oregon Legislature. The Constitution will be amended only if the measure is approved by the voters. If it passes, the probable result is that the Oregon Constitution will be amended to say that the state is obligated to ensure that Oregon residents have access to cost-effective, clinically appropriate and affordable healthcare as a fundamental right. This right to healthcare must be balanced with the state's obligation to fund public schools and other essential services. Supporters say that there are gaps in the health system that leave some people uninsured and even people who are insured sometimes find healthcare unaffordable. Lack of affordable and adequate healthcare hurts families' finances and prevents people from keeping jobs and going to school. Opponents say that the state is promising healthcare that it can't deliver and that a government-controlled healthcare system is unfeasible. Oregon Catalyst cites a twenty seventeen legislative report noting that it would cost over Oregon Catalyst cites a 2017 legislative report noting that it would cost over seventy billion dollars per budget cycle. The League of Women Voters supports this ballot measure.
All right. Thank you, Heath. And now Connie will provide an overview of Measure 112. Connie?
Ballot Measure 112 is also a constitutional amendment referred to the voters. It was passed by the 2021 Oregon Legislature. If this measure passes, it would amend the Oregon Constitution to remove language allowing slavery and involuntary servitude as punishment for crime, and would add language which allows programs such as counseling, education, work, or community service to be ordered as part of sentencing. If this measure fails, it would retain current language that prohibits slavery and involuntary servitude in general, but allows slavery and involuntary servitude as punishment for crime. Supporters say we must act on our morals and rid the Oregon Constitution of language that condones the dehumanizing practice of slavery. It would not alter prison work programs, community service, and rehabilitation programs. We must continue to offer opportunities for incarcerated persons to be involved in productive activity so that they can successfully re-enter society with practical skills and viable worth ethic. While there is no organized opposition to this, some opponents say that because language of slavery and involuntary servitude is the same language present in the U.S. Constitution, there is no need to modify the Oregon Constitution. They also say this measure could decrease state revenue from convict labor. The League of Women Voters supports this ballot measure.
All right. Thank you, Connie. And now back to Heath for an overview of Measure 113.
Okay, Ballot Measure 113 is a constitutional amendment placed on the ballot by initiative petition with an estimated one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred forty-three valid signatures. If passed, it would disqualify legislators with ten unexcused absences from legislative floor sessions from holding office as a legislator for the term following their current term of office. Absences from committee meetings would not count toward the ten unexcused absences. Supporters say that there have been six walkouts since 2019. The problem can't be solved legislatively because opponents can simply walk out before anything can be accomplished. Walkouts in the recent past affecting all Oregonians have prevented action on affordable housing, COVID relief, gun safety, school funding, and wildfire mitigation. Opponents say that the minority party may feel that walkouts may be their only recourse when constituents feel strongly that their point of view is not being heard. They also feel this measure puts too much power in the hands of the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House to decide what constitutes an unexcused, excuse me, an excused absence. The League of Women Voters did not take a position on this ballot measure.
All right. Thank you, Heath. And now back to Connie for an overview of Measure 114.
Ballot Measure 114 is a statutory initiative placed on the ballot by initiative petition with one hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred seventy-one valid signatures. Passage of the measure would change current firearm laws by requiring a permit to purchase a firearm. The permit issued by local law enforcement and renewable every five years would be issued after the applicant passes a background check, completes an approved live-fire safety course, and pays a fee to cover fingerprints and background check processing. Denial of a permit may occur if the applicant is deemed a danger to self or others. Manufacture, sale, use, or possession of large-capacity magazines holding more than ten rounds would become a Class A misdemeanor, with some exceptions for current owners, inheritors, law enforcement, and armed services personnel. If the matter doesn't, if the measure does not pass, existing laws would remain in effect, including requiring a seller transfer to request a background check before firearm purchase. Current law states that transfer of the firearm may occur after three days if the background check is not completed. A supporter's statement from the measure's preamble is such. Studies have shown that permits to purchase reduce firearm-related injuries and death. And studies have further shown that firearm ownership or access to firearms triples the risk of suicide and doubles the risk of homicide when compared to someone who does not have access. The National Rifle Association Institute for Legislative Action, an opponent of the measure, says Measure 114 is yet another anti-gun ballot initiative that seeks to further erode Second Amendment rights in Oregon. It imposes a permit requirement in order to exercise the Second Amendment right to acquire a firearm. The permit application process includes a one-size-fits-all training mandate, a subjective mental health review that is ripe for abuse, submission of fingerprints, and payment of a fee, up to sixty-five dollars to apply, and up to fifty dollars to renew. Issuing authorities have up to thirty days to issue permits to qualified applicants, and they must be renewed every five years. Meanwhile, criminals will continue obtaining their firearms illegally. The League of Women Voters supports this ballot measure.
All right. Thank you, Connie. So that was just a quick overview of those four ballot measures. And this brings our County Commissioner Forum and State Ballot Measure Overview to a close. We want to thank our two candidates. Thank Heath and Connie. And a special thank you to our co-hosts tonight, the League of Women Voters of Corvallis and the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP. And finally, to our audience, remember to vote. You can find all the information you need, including checking your registration status and registering to vote at oregonvotes.gov. That's oregonvotes.gov. And to learn more about all of the candidates, please visit Vote411. That's Vote411, which is your one-stop shop for candidates' information. So again, thank you. Good evening to everyone. And thank you all for joining us this evening.
Annette, do we have an opportunity to respond to the ballot measures, please?
No, not this evening. That's not part of the program. But perhaps you would, I believe tomorrow night, the Corvallis Advocate and City Club are going to be putting on a forum, candidate's forum. And both Candidate Malone and Candidate Coon will be speaking there. So that would give you an opportunity perhaps at that time. So thank you all very much. Appreciate your time. Thanks.